I'm Bill Junior.
That's what I thought too.
Age and beauty before me. Oh boy, are we in trouble.
Hey.
Hey, how are you?
Good, how are you?
All right, let's go ahead and begin the city council study session for July 16th, 2019. We have two issues on the agenda for tonight, the first being civil rights ordinance amendments, and we have Ms. Christina Bell to walk us through that.
Thank you, Mayor. And before we get started, I do want to recognize a few people in the room present tonight. This has definitely been a group project, a collaborative effort. So I would like to recognize members of our Human Rights Commission. We have our Chair Kay Ham is in the back, and we have Marjonne Seraphipour, Sage Molden, Trey Moore, one of our newly appointed members, Ellen Kraft, who's also recently appointed, and Jackie Farley. I'd also like to recognize Jack McMan. He is the city's ADA technician, and he has worked with me on the disability provisions and ADA provisions. And I also want to recognize Dawn Holliday, who is in the back there. He is a private attorney who has been very involved, very experienced with civil rights litigation, and has been very actively involved with working on this project and helping us get to where we are. So the ordinance we're looking at is the Chapter 7 ordinance, it's your civil rights ordinance in our code. Really how this initiative began was we received a request from Norman United, which is a local LGBTQ advocacy group, and some other allies who have requested that our civil rights ordinance include provisions for LGBTQ protections. And so kind of, there's been a couple steps in this process. Several years ago, there were some amendments made to our city personnel manual to include some protections. But the most recent thing up to this point was in December 22nd of 2015, city council passed resolution R 151665. And what that resolution provided was that the city's prohibition of sex discrimination, which is already included in our ordinance, should be interpreted and administered to guard against the use and stereotypes associated with sexual orientation and gender identity. And the interpretation that was provided in that resolution was based on several different things that had occurred in federal law. That resolution did reference Resolution R 080912, which is when the city joined the National League of Cities Partnership for Working Towards Inclusive Communities. That was something Mayor Rosenthal spearheaded as far as just making the city renew its commitment to building an inclusive community. It referenced the United States Supreme Court's case on same-sex marriage, which at the time had just come out, Vergifell versus Hodges, which recognized that same-sex marriage is protected under federal law and was legalized throughout the nation. And the application of the resolution, according to the words of the resolution, was that the interpretation of sex discrimination should be implied both for cities' own personnel policies and with the Chapter 7 ordinance, which does pertain to members of the community as well. The other three areas of federal law besides the same-sex marriage case that were referenced was, in regards to the employment area, it was consistent with interpretations of the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, or the EEOC, who governs equal employment under federal law, has interpreted sex discrimination in that way under Title 7 of the Civil Rights Act. It was also consistent with interpretations that HUD or the Department of Housing and Urban Development have consistently held that sex discrimination included those protections. And it also was to be applied towards public accommodations. And those three areas are the areas we're going to be focusing on tonight. That's what our ordinance covers, is protection in employment, housing, and public accommodations. A little bit of history about the civil rights ordinance. Of course, we're always proud that Norman has been known for leading the way in these issues. Ordinance 086872 was when the ordinance was originally adopted. It currently prohibits discrimination against citizens based on race, color, religion, ancestry, sex, national origin, age, place of birth, and handicap. Handicap is an outdated term that has been addressed in the amendments as well. There really hasn't been a lot of substantive changes since that time in the late 80s, other than increasing penalty ranges as allowed by state law over the years, except that on May 14th of 1996, council adopted ordinance 0979858, which added the legal status as a protected class based on the HUD recommendation as it related to housing protections. So a little bit of history, of course, this went to the Human Rights Commission for their review. They initially reviewed these proposed ordinance amendments on January 28th. They had a few minor amendments we'll go over that were presented to them on April 22nd. We did receive a unanimous recommendation to submit to you all for review and approval, and the Oversight Committee reviewed these amendments on May 9th. Okay, so the first part of the amendments, as I mentioned, was really spearheaded by the request for LGBTQ protections. So there are three additional specifically enumerated protected classes that have been added, protections for sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, and marital status, specifically including marriage to a person of the same sex. Other amendments include clarification of the Human Rights Commission's role in the process of enforcing the ordinance and reviewing and administering complaints. It streamlines the complaint and complaint resolution process, and it provides simplification of the substantive protections. Basically, what happened is as Mr. Holliday and I started reviewing our ordinance, we realized that in addition to these new requested protections, the ordinance just needed some updating, some housekeeping, and that it was somewhat burdensome and needed to be streamlined to just make it more clear so that citizens are aware of what their protections are and how they can exercise those rights. Yes, Mayor?
Making sure that you're going to get to the ADA accessibility and inclusion statement as well.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. So as I stated, the three specifically enumerated protected classes were sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, and marital status, including marriage to a person of the same sex. These three enumerated protected classes were added throughout the ordinance where the list of other protected classes was already listed. So they were included in the Declaration of Policy Objectives, which is in 7101, and the General Prohibition of Discrimination Retaliation, which is in Section 7104. With the new protections, we added new definitions. The definition for gender identity or expression is defined as the actual or perceived gender-related identity, appearance, expression, mannerisms, or other gender-related characteristics of an individual, regardless of the individual's designated sex at birth. That's been added at Section 7103 subsection 7. And then sexual orientation, an individual's actual or perceived heterosexuality, homosexuality, asexuality, or bisexuality, and that was added in subsection 13. The other part of the amendments that we added was clarification of the Human Rights Commission's role. As I'm sure most of you know, the Human Rights Commission is an advisory board containing nine members. There are five required for quorum or to take action. All of our Human Rights Commission members are citizen volunteers that are appointed by the mayor and approved by you all. One of the things that was added was an additional duty to provide and promote education and awareness of the rights provided in this code. That was a proposed amendment to Section 71027. There's already some language that kind of indicates that, but this was just being really clear that, of course, in addition to having these rights, we want to make sure that the Human Rights Commission is providing awareness and making sure that the community, of course, is aware of that. And then another thing that was really important that we have talked about is adding a reporting duty to submit an annual report of complaints filed to council. And that's been added at Section 7102 subsection 16. I've been staffing this commission for about six years, and we have not received any formal complaints during that time, but we are often asked, kind of, you know, what are the history of complaints? And we want to make sure we have good record-keeping of that. That provision does, of course, provide that if no complaints are received during the fiscal year, then there's no report that needs to be required. But that just makes sure that we're keeping you all informed of what's going on, and that's something that I think the Norman Election Commission and some of your other advisory boards provide to you. So we mirrored it after those provisions. The next set of amendments still was streamlining the complaint and the complaint resolution process. In your packets, I've given you three different versions. Sometimes, I know you all are used to seeing the annotated copy of amendments and then the clean copy. Because there are so many different things being moved around, a lot of things weren't necessarily removed, but they've just been renumbered or reorganized. I thought it was really important that you could see a clean copy of how it looks now. Of course, the annotated copy to outline the changes and then have a real good view of the current copy to see. And if you look at it that way, you'll see that the current copy is much shorter. That was something I know Mr. Holliday and I discussed about, making sure that citizens are able to look at the ordinance and very easily and quickly be able to identify what their rights are and how they're able to exercise that. Some of the provisions that are in the current ordinance relate to some civil procedures under state law that are no longer in effect. There's a lot of things in there dealing with issuing subpoenas and compelling production of documents and things like that. And we really just wanted to simplify that process to make it less of a formal, kind of quasi-judicial process, and make it more in line with what it really would be under what we're doing now if we were to receive a complaint, which is really to have more of an administrative review process. The goal, of course, like we have with code compliance or anything else in the city, what we're really looking for is compliance. And so our primary goal with this ordinance is making sure that we find amicable resolutions that offer real remedies to aggrieved individuals. It was really important that we made sure that there's mediation and other alternative dispute resolution options, because obviously, we all know that those are sometimes the best way to actually reach a good resolution for the parties. And it still provides that there's no preclusion of concurrent other administrative remedies under private or civil action. So in other words, if somebody were to file a complaint under our ordinance, there's nothing in there prohibiting them from also filing with the EEOC if it was an employment issue or with HUD, or even instituting a private civil action with their own attorney. So the complaint filing and administrative review process, right now, I think the ordinance just says, you know, that you have to file a complaint with the Human Rights Commission. Of course, the Human Rights Commission, as I said, is a voluntary commission that meets quarterly, so we added some language to make it clear that the complaints were to be filed with the court clerk. And I'm sorry, I picked court clerk, and that should say the city clerk, which I believe is part of the ordinance. Nothing like seeing that in a group of people here. So that should be filed with the city clerk on a form adopted by the Human Rights Commission. And again, that's something that almost all of our legal documents for the city, the city clerk is, who is basically our agent to receive those kind of complaints. And there is an example of the form in your materials. And it just says adopted by the Human Rights Commission. The reason for that is, of course, so that if there's any reason to modify those forms, the commission can do that through their meetings. One of the things Mr. McMan helped me with was we did add a provision providing that accommodations for individuals with disabilities would be available upon request. Of course, part of the education process that Mr. McMan has been working with us is understanding that we have an obligation to make sure that members of our community with disabilities, particularly in the areas of communicating or writing or things like that, have other options. And so there is a provision providing in there that accommodations would be provided upon request. And it references our ADA accessibility and inclusion statement, which if you go to that, that provides all the contact information from Mr. McMan, so that if somebody for some reason was unable to submit a written complaint, they could work with him to find a way to get that submitted. This is in the current language as well, but it still says that complaints must be filed within 90 days after the alleged act of discrimination or retaliation occurs. And it provides that the Human Rights Commission should review this at its next regularly scheduled meeting or special meeting that is at least 30 days after receiving the complaint. The reason for that language is, as I mentioned earlier, we want to make sure that the parties have an opportunity to respond to the complaints and to discover mediation or alternative dispute options if that's something that they're interested in. And so that's why it says at least 30 days. The concern there, of course, is like our Human Rights Commission meets on a Monday. If the complaint received on Friday, obviously, they're not going to be prepared to review that at the next time. So since they are meeting quarterly, that gives them enough time to give notice to the respondent.
Speaking of meeting quarterly, I know that I brought this up in Oversight, and Councilwoman Scott was unable to attend tonight and asked me to bring it up again. Is it possible to have the Human Rights Commission meet monthly? It's written, if I read the ordinance correctly, it doesn't limit it to quarterly. It's we could adjust it as needed. So I'd be interested in hearing feedback on that.
Correct. The provisions of when they meet, basically, they submit, in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, they submit a calendar of meetings each year by December, and so right now they're set with quarterly. We do always have provisions that they can always provide a special meeting if, for example, if there was a really big complaint or something that needed to be addressed sooner rather than later, they would always have the option of calling a special meeting with 40 hours or 48 hours' notice. But I do think that's something that, I don't know that that would be necessary under this ordinance, but if that's something you all want to look at, that's something the Human Rights Commission could discuss.
Then we just make a decision by December when we're filing that calendar. Councilwoman Bierman?
One of the things we could do to kind of be in the middle of those two ideas is the MLF oversight committee schedules monthly, but then usually cancels at least one or two meetings, usually in July or August. And so there's always the option, because a lot of it, from what I understand, is securing room reservations for the year, as well as open meetings, to make sure that we have the space for these meetings. So, you know, it certainly wouldn't be out of the question to schedule monthly, but then if no complaints come in a week or two weeks before that monthly meeting, they can cancel the ones that are kind of in between their quarterly meetings. So that way, the room is secured, so if a complaint does come in, they can then be there to address it. Otherwise, you know, they can cancel the meeting as needed throughout the year as well.
My issue is not the, you know, we haven't received any complaints in six years, maybe we will now that we've updated the process, but they're one of our most active boards or commissions, and they do resolutions all the time. And we have ran into a slight issue when we planned the beloved Community Speaker series last year, because we'd already missed their quarterly meeting, and there was no way to talk to everyone again until, without a special session. So I think it's more than just the complaints that might necessitate it, but I don't want to tell the commission what to do without getting their input as well. So perhaps we could discuss that further at their last meeting of the year.
Sure. So like I said, the reason why it was listed as providing at least 30 days' notice is they are meeting every 90 days, and that is important for due process concerns, that we give the opportunity for the respondent to receive notice and to provide a response if they choose to do so. And again, it provides time for mediation or settlement options before review. Just like what's in the current ordinance, except the language is revised just slightly, the complainants and the respondents still, of course, have the right to file a written response, appear at the administrative review, have legal counsel if they choose, bring additional witnesses, and present additional information. Again, that all goes to due process concerns and just making sure both parties have a right to present whatever they want the commission to consider. Resolution of Complaints Propose Section 7108 addresses basically three different options. The first one, again, of course, is there's mediation and ADR options. Those are available according to the ordinance, both prior to the administrative review process. So basically, if a complaint comes in, that gives our office, the city attorney's office, as well as the chair the right to reach out to parties to see if mediation or some sort of settlement option is something that they want to explore before it's actually reviewed by the commission. It also gives the Human Rights Commission the option to conduct a mediation process during the administrative review process or to refer it out for mediation. The second option, of course, is dismissal. The Human Rights Commission always has the authority by majority vote if they find a complaint to be unfounded, or that no additional action is warranted, or that the case has been resolved through mediation or some other means. They can always vote to dismiss the complaint. And then finally, if the commission finds by majority vote that there are merits to the complaint, then they are to prepare a written recommendation to the city attorney's office with basically their findings and to send to our office for review of whether further action is warranted and what that action should be. And again, some of this was modeled kind of after what the Norman Election Commission had done in the past, was, you know, they kind of reviewed complaints and would refer them to our office for further enforcement action if necessary. The city attorney has multiple enforcement options. This is also addressed in Section 7108. It includes referral of the complaint to other local, state, or federal entities. As I mentioned, the EEOC, under certain circumstances, could look at federal cases or could look at cases that would be applied under that particular provision. The state attorney general's office also has an Office of Civil Rights Enforcement. HUD, of course, covers housing, and so this gives us a right to refer the complaint to those. We just always want to reserve that right, because of course, they have significant financial resources and other things that may be appropriate. Again, it's stated mediation of the matter between the involved parties, probably as a last resort, but of course, there's always the option of prosecuting the respondent in municipal court. The provisions there would be a maximum fine of from $50 to $750 and/or 60 days in jail. It's possible, again, like we do with code compliance and other things, what we're really looking for is compliance and trying to make sure that the grievance has remedies. So that would probably be a last resort if we didn't have other options. It gives us the option to file injunctive relief in district court if we deem that appropriate, or to reach a determination that no further action should be taken if there's a reason for that finding. Simplification of the substantive protections that ordinance has always covered, employment, housing, and public accommodations. Again, if you just look at the way it's written now versus our proposed recommendation, it really just kind of shortens it and just makes it easier and more simple with kind of more of a blanket. You can't discriminate or retaliate on these bases, and then there are some limited exceptions. But instead of having multiple subsections, it combines it all into one prohibition against discrimination retaliation, and then just provides a few limited exceptions. I will say, if you look at the language, it kind of looks like they're adding the exceptions, but really, they have just been removed from other parts of the ordinance, which is why it looks like new language, but really, it's just been reorganized and renumbered. Other definitions that we addressed kind of as cleanup items is we amended the definition of age to make it consistent with Age Discrimination Employment Act, so we changed that language to say to 40 years or older. I'm not really sure why it had the age limit there that it did, so we just modified that. And then again, we've changed handicap person to disability and amended the definition of disability consistent with the Americans with Disabilities Act, because there's been a lot of progress in that realm as well. The Human Rights Commission had just a few amendments when we presented to them. One that was discussed, and I believe was presented by Mr. Holliday, was there was a concern about removing the minimum number of employees in the definition of employer. It's pretty common for civil rights laws to have a minimum number of employees before those laws go into effect. Most of the laws in force under the EEOC, for example, under federal civil rights laws usually require that there be at least 15 employers. Our ordinance has had five in that. But there was some concern, I think particularly from the LGBTQ community, that that is why they were requesting these specific protections, that being that there was concerns about there being sort of a gap with smaller employers that wouldn't otherwise be covered by federal law or some of these other provisions, because they are limited to larger employers. One thing I did look at is the state definition of employer under the state's civil rights laws does not have a minimum number. It just says any person or entity who pays one or more individuals a salary or wages for work performance. So we modified the employer to include that language, remove the minimum number of five employees. Now, of course, there is one distinction. Our state's civil rights ordinance is, of course, does not cover protections for LGBTQ. So there is that distinction, but they don't have a minimum employee number. Exclusions are independent contractors, because they're not employees, and then employment of spouse or children, and those are exclusions that are common in civil rights law. They're included in the state law and have always been in our ordinance as well. The second amendment from the Human Rights Commission was clarifying the definition of domestic service. Domestic service is also routinely exempted from civil rights laws and is exempted in the state provisions. But there was some question and concern about what that means, and so we added a definition that says private household workers employed in a private home, such as nannies, housekeepers, and elder caregivers. I know the Oversight Commission, as well as the Human Rights Commission, kind of asked, why is that an exemption? And I even spoke with the chief of the Office of Civil Rights Enforcement, the AG's office, and she agreed that it really is just kind of striking a balance between regulating employers and regulating what people can do in the privacy and intimacy of their own home. So domestic service is really in regards, if you were to have like a private caretaker, like a nanny for your house, or somebody who's taking care of an elderly parent or something like that. It's not an employment setting that's open to the public. Like I said, it's in the intimacy of your own home, and that's kind of just striking that balance. The final...
Councilwoman Wilson?
I'm confused about that one. So they can discriminate against those caregivers?
The ordinance does not apply to them. So, I mean, obviously, we would hope that citizens would not discriminate, but it would not, they would not be considered a employer.
But we couldn't intervene in that event if it happened.
Not as an enforcement action. Our municipal court does have a mediation program that people can file complaints, or sometimes they'll accept referrals even with that. So if something were to come in, even if it's not covered in the ordinance, we would certainly make, you know, recommendations to them or advise them that they would have those options to explore if they want, but it's not something we would enforce under this ordinance.
I have concerns about that. I have concerns that there are a lot of... It's already in a private setting, so there's a lot of opportunity for unsavory behaviors, you know, in that setting. So I'll just say that I have concerns, and I don't know what we can do about it, but for the record, I have concerns.
The final amendment that the Human Rights Commission requested was just kind of an update. There's a provision in Section 7104 that prohibits discrimination in terms of communications as far as advertising and posting documents, and so they asked us to add electronic communications in order to incorporate email and social media to the discrimination publication prohibition. So again, just kind of bringing the ordinance up to date. So future steps, if you all direct us to move forward with this, council consideration would look at this first reading on August 13th, with the second reading on August 27th. Once the ordinance amendments are adopted, we would also work on modifying the anti-discrimination contract provisions, which goes to your question, Mayor. We currently already have anti-discrimination contract provisions that we require contractors who come to the city to certify that they will not discriminate, and there's some contractors with not. And so we would add those LGBTQ protections to that language. And then also, you all recently adopted our ADA accessibility and inclusion statement, which we are now putting, I'm sure you've noticed on all of our agendas and other documents. And so we made sure that that language was consistent with what we have now, and those protections would be added to that, too. The reason why they're not there currently is just because the ordinance has not been amended. And then the final part, one thing the Oversight talked about was providing training for the Human Rights Commission and for local businesses. And so I did, again, speak with the Office of Civil Rights Enforcement, and they did mention that they could provide some training opportunities, and we would work with the Human Rights Commission to look at other options for that as well.
I think it would also be helpful to talk to, what are they calling it now, the Office of Diversity and Inclusion on campus. I've gone through several employee trainings there, and they might offer to host one or at least provide training to those that would train.
Right. That's a great idea. So with that, would entertain any other questions or comments?
Councilwoman Wilson?
I'm still stewing on my, on that, back to that one point. Is it, and forgive me, I've got like a million things bombarding my brain. Is it, we can't do that? The Human Rights Commission didn't want us to include private household workers? I mean, can we modify that? Or...
Right.
How do we come to that?
So domestic service was currently listed as an exception under the definition of employer. That's been in our current ordinance ever since it was adopted in the 80s. The Human Rights Commission, kind of as you are, just brought that up as some questions about, well, what does that even mean? Does that, you know, what does domestic service mean? It wasn't a defined term. I will tell you, I do think the Human Rights Commission, and again, several of them are here, so they can, if the mayor wanted to recognize them, maybe ask them about that. I do think that it's fair to say that some of them also shared your concerns about what domestic service is and what that means. But I know that at a minimum, they said, you know, we definitely want to make sure that we at least included a definition so that we know particularly what that is in regarding. And again, like I said, I understand the concerns that you all have. It is something that's very common. It's not really addressed, I mean, not that...
Can we take that extra step and address it? I mean, what would that open us up to? Liability or some sort of...
I think you all have the right, you know, to modify that if you want to. Again, I think it's just kind of a balance.
I'll expand that. I really feel that some of our most vulnerable citizens end up in these, you know, doing these jobs, and I really would like to have extra protections for them. Already, there's the fear of reporting things, and if we don't have really robust ordinances that can back them up, I fear that we are missing an important part of our community.
Councilwoman Trump?
I share her concerns, and also, in the way that we, with today's technology, how we hire them often is through like apps and things. we hire them often is through like apps and things like that, and I wouldn't want someone showing up, you know, and out of the house saying really terrible things and saying, you know, calling that company back and saying, the nanny, whatever it is, you know, babysitter's plus or whatever. Don't send me any of these, whatever. So, I mean, I share your concerns, but I would like to hear if Professor Holliday would be willing to speak to this.
No. I think the discussion's one that's been had. It's probably up to the council.
Councilmember Bearman?
I third that, I guess. This was something that I brought up in the Oversight Committee meeting in May. I would say it's not just an uncommon problem, it's a problem we've had here in this city. And so I think that these are protections that if legally, we can do it if we're not preempted in some way. I think that this is a step we should take, because as both have said, these are often people who are limited in their means to address this in other ways and tend to be more marginalized, more people who would be subjected to the kinds of things that would lead to a complaint. And so I think that we need to take action where we can, and if we're not prevented in some way, I don't see why we don't take that step.
Can I add?
Councilmember Wilson?
As emerging technologies, there's a lot of disruptive things happening in our technological and service industry, dog walkers, so this is why this is in my brain, babysitters plus or whatever you want to call it, Uber drivers, you know, you got a lot of independent contractors out there now. So I really, I really think that this is...
I'm all for providing the most protection possible, but my concern is that by, because it is that private aspect, if we basically force a relationship with someone, then they're more inclined to get discriminated and treated poorly within a private setting, since it's not a public setting, if that makes sense.
Are all businesses private settings?
I'm talking about like in a home, it's completely different for me than a business. And so that's my concern, is if we're forcing them to hire someone and not allowing that discretion, for whatever reason people feel the way they feel, I'm worried it puts that worker actually in harm more than it would if that was not allowed to, if they had the ability to avoid that situation in the beginning.
I think I'm seeing it more as the employee is in the position. So maybe we're kind of seeing two different sides.
Yeah, I'm seeing the hiring part in the straight-up selection.
I'm seeing that they're in the position and they're being treated badly, or...
I don't think they would have hired them in the private setting, is what I'm saying, if they had.
If your Uber driver shows up and they don't adhere to your personal political beliefs or something like that.
Right. So domestic service, I said, this, I mean, part of this kind of goes, you know, you mentioned independent contractors, too, and part of it is some domestic service workers in a private home honestly might be precluded anyways, independent contractors.
Ooh, I actually jumped up to independent contractors.
I don't really want to, you know, I'm not really prepared to go into discussion of the IRS code of when a nanny is an employee versus an independent contractor and things like that. But I think what it's really looking at is if you were to hire, not necessarily even a business, but if you were to hire somebody to come clean your house, or to watch your children, or, you know, to give an elderly parent their baths, things like that.
Councilwoman Hickman?
I guess the question that I have, my concern, and I'll just use sort of my real-world example. My mom is, you know, near the need of elder care, and she says she's not racist, she's from Texas, and so I'll just, I'll say that kind of in a joking way. She's almost 80 years old, and God love her, I love her, but she says things that I would never say, and, you know, and I try to correct her, just whether it's a generational thing or it's being from Texas, you know, I don't know. But my concern is I could see a person like that, where I would be the one hiring her elder caregiver, who could very well say something that could be very offensive to the people we are trying to protect and not mean it probably in her own mind to be offensive, but being it's in her home and that person's caring for her. I'm not saying that that's right, that that person, that my mom should be allowed to speak that way to that person, but in the intimacy of kind of your own home, you know, I'm not sure how I would tell my mom, you know, or be able to prevent my mom from, you know, Mom, that's inappropriate, you can't say those things, because she would say things not like in an assaulting way to the person potentially, but in a way that very likely might could be offensive to someone. And that's where I kind of struggle with. And, you know, and I don't, I'm not saying that, you know, my mom maybe is the only person in the world like that, but I see where in examples like that, where you're in the home setting, especially with an elder care type situations, the main example that came to my mind, where it A, could be very hard to enforce potentially, or B, very challenging, because it's almost like the employer relationship would be, like, for example, oftentimes it's a family member who's hiring someone for elder care, so if the elder who's being cared for says it, is that the employer? Or is it the, you know, the son who's hiring the person who's the employer, and therefore if son isn't the one saying it, then it's not an employee-employer relationship and doesn't apply. And I don't want to go too far down the weeds, but those are just an example that came to my mind, sitting here, listening to the discussion, because it's something I can see in my foreseeable future potentially.
That's exactly the concerns that I was trying to voice. So, Councilmember Bearman?
While I totally understand that, my aunt was also one of those...
From Texas?
No.
No. All due respect to all Texas parents.
Through that same line of thinking, though, do we still then believe that someone who is employed in that type of industry has no redress in this way? Because I think all of us can agree that people behind a keyboard or in their own homes will say things that maybe they wouldn't say in a public setting. I don't think that that then means that just because someone is working in one of these fields, particularly something like elder care or any kind of home health, those people tend to be of a status where it would bring out that kind of feeling in someone. Every single one of my aunt's caregivers was from another country. And while that wasn't a problem early in her dementia, it became increasingly a problem throughout her dementia. And particularly in these types of service industries, they tend to be people of color. They tend to be people from other countries. And to me, that means that they deserve more protection in these ways rather than less. These are not the kinds of jobs that I think we need to be exempting simply because of the situation that we're in and the type of people who work in these fields. I think they deserve these protections, particularly because I know a lot of people who would never say the things to my face that they have said to me behind a keyboard, but they might in their own home. And I do not think that that exempts them from a potential hate crime complaint or hate speech complaint. I think that that, I don't, I don't, I don't really see why we have this exemption for people who are going to be more likely to bear the brunt of this kind of speech.
I go back to Councilmember Hickman's example, though. You know, if he's trying to make the best choice for care for his parent and the person that is hired to care for his parent, and he doesn't hire a person for whatever reason, and then he gets a complaint filed against him when he was actually looking out for the best interest of that employee, knowing the person he was going to care for, so that...
And I think that comes out in the complaint process.
Yeah. I think we are talking about hiring versus once you're employed. I think that's where we're having the hiccup, because I agree, once you're employed, it's completely unacceptable, period, in any position, anywhere. But I don't want to force people to get into the positions to create that opportunity.
But I think that's why we have a complaint process, and the Human Rights Commission can dismiss the complaint, you know, on the basis or see it through, and then bill's exonerated.
Again, I just want to underscore that whether it's merry maids, that type of service, I
mean, it's not the individual that the record is being kept with. And so that's what's concerning to me, is that someone would call and say, I don't want this whatever person hate speech, insert whatever derogatory statement, coming back to clean my house with this team. And then you, where does the responsibility lie at that point? Is it that merry maids can just not send that person anymore because they are, insert hate speech? I mean, we're letting, it's not just one individual person, it's a company, and that's exactly what we're trying to avoid.
Any other thoughts from other council members on this issue? Councilwoman Scanlon?
I'm hung up on privacy. I really am. We are going to, and I empathize with the potential victim here, I really do. I wonder what other recourse they might have if we don't have such a provision in this ordinance. And I think we ought to explore that in discussion, but I really hang up on the ultimate enforcement, getting down to a person's privacy.
Councilman Hickman?
I guess something that this outlook Councilmember Petrow said that maybe got me thinking. I was more thinking about this from kind of the individual, private household worker relationship, you know, like the elder caregiver where, you know, there's somebody who just applies to come and take care of my mom, and you hire that person, they're not with a big corporation or something like merry maids, is maybe a middle ground here to clarify that, you know, it's, if it's an individual, private household worker, that they're exempt, but if it's, you know, you're hiring someone from a corporation, merry maids or, you know, nannies are us or whatever, that, you know, because it's, because it is a corporation who may be doing business in a larger scale in our community, that, you know, we do expect them to comply with, because at that point, if we're taking out the five-employee minimum, the concept to me is like, we do want companies to comply. It's that private individual. I mean, I understand that it's still the privacy in the home of the maid that may work for a large corporation like Merry Maid. I get that. And so I, you know, I also understand that it doesn't, like I said, this is a compromise where it's not totally protecting the privacy aspect of someone in their home, but it's also not applying to that individual relationship where, you know, a person is hired maybe on an individual basis to be a nanny or a housekeeper or, you know, an elder caregiver or something, because in a way, those people would not have applied, would not have been under the ordinance anyway, also, when we had the five, number of five employees minimum. So I'm just throwing it out there as an idea, as a potential middle ground that, you know, provides some protection but doesn't go all the way to the individual.
Councilmember Carter?
I'm with Sarita on this one. I don't, I don't like it.
Councilmember Wilson?
I still see that moment at the door or where you can't come in my house, but you I think there should be, I think if I was you, I wouldn't want to go in that house. However, there should be some protections there. You can't have the opportunity to mow my lawn, but you can. I mean, that's...
I understand Councilwoman Scanlon's concern about privacy when you put it that way, like, but it's my house.
But I guess you can't come in my house because you have that shirt on? You can't because I like that shirt better? You can't come in my house because you're not good at your job for XYZ or this reason that's not going to be a good relationship fit, but you can because you have this experience or that experience. This is what I'm seeing. I'm, I hire people all the time, and, you know, I look at what their qualifications are, and I know, you know, I know we're talking about inside the house, so I'm trying to back up to that, but at the same time, I feel like there should be protections. And then once they're in the house, there should be protections for that, too.
Councilwoman Bearman?
To me, it boils down to abuse, whether verbal or physical, is abuse, and it's a crime, no matter where it takes place. Doesn't matter if it takes place in your home, an animal or a human, or in public, animal or human. If you abuse someone, it doesn't matter where it happens, it's still a crime. And I have no doubt that the HRC is going to be looking at this from an administrative perspective here and not going into someone's home and leafing through all their papers and, you know, being invasive into someone's privacy, that the point of this is to extend the same protections that we would to someone in a business setting regardless of where that business is taking place. If the business is taking place inside someone's home, to me, that's not a deal breaker, because abuse, verbal or otherwise, no matter where it takes place, is still something that we need to be extending protection to everyone for, regardless of whether or not that person is being hired through a company or as an individual, because frankly, I get the feeling that the abuse is probably more likely to happen to an individual than it is through a company. That merry maids, if you send someone back and say, I don't want that person, send me someone else, that company could very likely stand up for their employee and say, well, then we're terminating that relationship with you. So I, while I understand all of the concerns here, I think that what we're talking about in terms of a mechanism by which someone can file a complaint with an entity that doesn't have any punitive power, that their point is mediation, that the privacy aspect is here, whereas the redress is up here, that giving someone the ability to bring forward a complaint does not throw the door open to someone's home and say, come in and find whatever it is that you're looking for. So I still, I still think that this needs to include, if we're eliminating the number of employees in the definition of employer, then we need to be extending these protections to every single person who is taking money to do a job in this city regardless of where that job is taking place.
Councilwoman Scanlon?
I'll repeat that I really emphasize, empathize with the individual who may be aggrieved in this, and I wonder what remedies beyond this that they might have, and I think that's worthy of discussion. But I'm still hung up with the, what I think is the ultimate invasion of my privacy. If my home is not my castle, what is it? If I have to answer to some city ordinance about what I do in my own home, it really is getting to a point that...
You have to answer about your electricity in your home, so...
I don't think that analogy holds.
Any other comments? It sounds like the majority of councils in support of removing that exception. I think a lot of great points were made. I think we've addressed a lot of concerns both ways, but that's what I'm seeing, so I believe that's the direction we're going to recommend you go in. Any other questions or comments about the civil rights ordinance amendments? I will take a moment to thank the Human Rights Commission and Mr. Holliday for all his work on this, as well as yours, Christina. I know this has been a labor of love. I remember getting asked about, where are we at with those amendments, like in 2016 when I first got on council? So well done. But I also want to take this opportunity to renew our commitment to an inclusive community. I will be working with the Chair of the Human Rights Commission to create a subcommittee that will help us draft a map to building an inclusive community. In response to some of the graffiti incidents that we had in April, I think it's clear that we still have work to do, and I would like to get some input from that committee on actual action items that we can take. I very much appreciate the resolutions and proclamations. I think that does signify who we are and what we represent. This is a huge step, but I do think it's time to reevaluate what being an inclusive community means, and I look forward to their input.
Do you ever get tired of this?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Council. Happy to be back to talk about, I think we're talking about public transportation in light of the 8% sales tax conversation, so thanks for giving us that time. We've got Angela Lombardo with me, our city transportation engineer. On the theme of the previous speaker, I want to acknowledge we've got lots of staff doing really great work. I know I'm the one you see here, but they're doing all the work, and Angela has been terrific helping put this together. Christina Bell and Catherine from our legal team are just killing it and spending lots of hours negotiating contracts. Jack McMahon has been involved and will be much more involved as we go along as a public transportation provider. And somebody you don't see very often, Mike White, our fleet superintendent, is still trying to figure out what hit him on fleet management, so I'll talk about that here in a minute. So thanks for the chance to, we're going to drill down a little bit more than we did last week, and give a little bit of background for the new council members and our new city manager that you, some of you already know. So again, CART, or our transportation, public transportation system, had operated for about 35 years by the University of Oklahoma. We were very happy with that until about 11 months ago, when they decided they didn't want to do that anymore.
anymore. It has been funded for those 35 years by the Federal Transit Administration, the University of Oklahoma, City, State, and Norman Regional Hospital. And we were notified in August of last year, you were, that, that their revenues weren't covering their expenses, so council increased your contribution to CART last year, or in FY19, to 635,500. So these numbers will mean something as we go along. In FY18, you were, you were spending $575,000. You increased to 635,500 in FY19. In FY20, you were at $1,001,35,500. So you are increasing your contribution to public transportation at, some might say, an alarming rate, or a very large rate. Right now, what I'm going to tell you tonight is you will spend more than twice the amount you spent this year in FY20 to operate this system. CART managed the operations this year, thankfully, within their budget limitations. So again, Cleveland Area Rapid Transit operated by University of Oklahoma is now becoming a City of Norman public transportation system, and we are going to recommending contracting with M-MARK, which is the company or the trust that operates the Oklahoma City Public Transit System, and they are a trust of the City of Oklahoma City. So that's partly why we have pursued their partnership. So some basic principles are what I would call council directives. Last fall, when we came to you with this challenge, you gave us some pretty clear direction, and we hope that we followed that. You decided you wanted to be the grant recipient of the FTA fund. So don't let M-MARK or someone else do it. We want to manage our own resources, so we are becoming the grant recipient of the FTA grant funds. You asked us to do as much as we could to get this transferred over by July 1st, which is what the request from OU was. We're almost going to make that. We're almost made it. We still have a little bit more to do. Yeah, of course, we had to coordinate with the FTA on all of our, all of our actions. You wanted a smooth transition. You wanted no gaps in service. No, the buses never stopped running, and then maintain the same level of service, no less certainly, but frankly, no more either as we're, the rate we're going. So where are we today? On June 25th, you had an active council agenda. You adopted the grant recipient resolution with the FTA, so we, we made that goal. Also on that council agenda, you approved an agreement, an interlocal agreement with OU to basically bridge the gaps here. So the University of Oklahoma is providing public transit services this month, month of July, just like they were in June and May, all of the services, and we are paying them $70 per service hour, or it's going to come out to about $245,000 a month for this month and any other months going forward. They're also doing fleet maintenance on that fleet. So on July 1st, we became the FTA grant recipient. We are officially the operator of public transportation that relates to the federal government.
Counselor Wilson?
What's the fleet maintenance costing us? Is that within that same 245?
I'm going to get to that if you'll allow me. It's a bigger number than you probably think.
I thought it might be.
It always is.
It's in that 70 service hour number for now, but we'll, we'll break it out for you. So again, CART officially on July 1st, although if you, if you ride the buses, you don't see any different now, but officially two weeks ago, CART became our contractor, or the University of Oklahoma became our contractor. They're operating the public transportation system, and we are paying them under a contract that you all approved on June 25th. A week from tonight, we're going to bring to you a contract with M-MARK. So we're ready to make that handoff between University of Oklahoma and M-MARK, another transit provider. So the buses will say M-MARK, not CART anymore, and they will be employees of M-MARK, not the University of Oklahoma.
Counselor Wilson?
Who pays for that logo change?
We're getting to that, too.
Okay, okay.
Great, great question. Thank you. Those are great questions, and we hope we cover all of them tonight. So between July 1st and September 13th, M-MARK has been and will continue to be down there at the CART facility, hiring new staff. So they will be hiring drivers and dispatchers and supervisors and so on. We need 18, or they need 18 new staff for the fixed route service, 17 new staff for paratransit. So 35 new people that they're hiring, but the way I think of it is there was, there was 35 or so employees of the University of Oklahoma that were laid off or in the process of a layoff. I heard, I had a report today from Chris Glenn at CART that they have nearly completed the hiring process, and all but four of the University of Oklahoma employees have been rehired by
That's your question, Counselor Vermin?
So that's really, really kind of amazing news.
Does that, does that 35 include the dispatchers and supervisors?
It does. Yes, you bet. And you'll have a breakdown, more detail here next week when we come back to you with the formal agreement. So here's how we're going to do it. It's a transition or a, I guess, a phased approach. That's the best we can do. I'm sorry we couldn't get it all done on July 1st, but that was a, that was a tall order for all of us. So M-MARK, if you approve the agreement next Tuesday, will assume operation of the fixed routes, the seven fixed routes, and there's a map here of that. It's the same fixed routes that CART has been operating for many years, and they will start doing that. So on, on, well, it's actually August 5th, so on Friday, August 2nd, CART will stop operating fixed routes. On Monday, August 5th, M-MARK will begin operating fixed routes. Same buses, same routes, but different drivers and different employers. We think on or before October 1st, M-MARK will be ready to take over the paratransit services. So between August 5th and October 1st, the University of Oklahoma will continue to operate paratransit. M-MARK will be operating fixed routes. Also between that time, we are trying to transition into the city, performing fleet maintenance in coordination with the University of Oklahoma fleet maintenance operation, and we hope, Mike and I hope, but we've got a lot to do, that we can transition over the next three months, and that it will be city mechanics and city tools and city parts and so on by October 1st, fully transferred over. But that's a, that's a tall order as well. But that's our plan. So between Octo, or August 2nd and December 31st, we're estimating here, the city will lease the CART facility or the Theda Dempsey Transportation Center to perform fleet maintenance. We're going to take up two of the stalls, and there's a rate for that, and then M-MARK will have its dispatchers and drivers and so on down there, operating the button, or using the buses and so on.
Counselor Hickman?
Why are we having to pay to lease those facilities when it was built with the federal funds that were a part of the CART system? Great question. That kind of is my next point. Counselor, good segue there. So as part of the FTA, again, there's an FTA agreement between the University of Oklahoma and, and them, an FTA, and there's one between the City of Norman and FTA. And the, the university agreement basically says that they have to pay back all of those dollars that they, they use federal funds, or all of those assets that they use federal funds to acquire, and that's primarily focused on the building. So we're understanding, we don't know the final numbers. There's an appraisal process going on, but we understand that the University of Oklahoma will have to write a check for about $3 million very soon to the FTA to pay back the money they received to build that facility. So they want to own it exclusively and operate it for whatever their future purposes are. They're not interested in selling it to us, but they are willing to lease it to us until we can build our own. I hope that answers your question. You said summer or fall of 2019? Is that supposed to be 2020? No, we're, we're negotiating right now. We're, we're doing on, on that side of the things. We are negotiating with FTA and ODOT. We believe, we as a staff believe, we hope you agree, that those federal funds came to Norman, came to the Norman Public Transportation Systems, and the notion that they would go back to the federal government and be transferred to some other city, we, we don't think that's appropriate or fair. We think they should come right back to the City of Norman, because we've got buildings to build and buses to buy and so on, just like the university did. So we are working pretty hard with our FTA partners to preferably just have the university write us the check, whatever that amount is that they agreed to with FTA, because as you'll see as I go along, we've got lots of millions of dollars to spend on, on transit facilities. Do you think, I'm just curious, when this first came up, I, the thought crossed my mind, does OU even realize that they're probably at the end of the day going to have to write us a check? Do you think that they realized that when they wanted to get out of this deal? I, I know they realized it, because that was our early conversations last fall. I think they were hoping for maybe if they leased it to us, they wouldn't have to pay it back, but that was the decision of the FTA, that no matter if they lease it to us or not, they have to pay back the money that they spent.
And how much is it in the lease?
We understand, the lease is still in progress, and we'll have those numbers for you next Tuesday, or next, yeah, next Tuesday, but it's, it's a, it's per office space square footage, so we're going to have dispatchers and so on in those, and then there's another rate for the stalls in the, in the garage, in the shop. So you'll see all those breakdowns next Tuesday. I've got general numbers tonight for you.
Counselor Wilson?
Could we negotiate a trade for fire service?
That's a good question.
Just wondering.
You may want to trade for other things when you see these numbers, but, so, in the, so in the fall of this year, we, with your blessing, all, all of these things have to be approved by council, we need to build a building. I have nowhere to do maintenance, and I don't have a stall big enough to work on a bus in my current fleet facility, maybe one, if we, we do work on fire trucks now. But in your current budget, in your FY2020 capital budget, you have $875,000 budgeted for a emergency vehicle maintenance and storage facility. It's been in the budget for a couple of years, and we just haven't been able to get it together. It was driven by the PSSD program and the addition of all these new fire trucks and so on, and not enough places to put them. So our fire and police partners have, have agreed to work with us and convert that to a dual emergency vehicle maintenance and transit maintenance facility. If you think about it, they're about the same size, big, long vehicles, like a whole different kind of operation, whole different chassis and so on. So we'd like to convert that existing budget allocation and that building concept to a dual purpose with your blessing. We have a lot to do to get a building designed and built by January 1st, but we, we're already started on that, unless you tell me otherwise tonight. So if everything goes as planned, and I suspect we'll have some challenges by January 1st, we will have converted out of the OU facility, stopped paying a lease rate, and put it in our own building, on our own real estate at North Base. At that point is my hope that all of these transit operations will be operating out of a city-owned new building and away from the University of Oklahoma operation entirely.
Counselor Scanlon?
I just make the point that this scratches an itch that's been lingering in fire for quite some time. It's good to see everybody working together to solve a common problem.
Agreed.
Thank you, Counselor. And it, yeah, appreciate that. They've been great to work with, and we're going to, we're going to help with the process of designing a building so that it take it off of their plates.
Counselor Hickman?
So are we going to have to, do we need more land in the North Base, or the property you have, they're big enough? We think we have enough property to fit this in, Counselor. We're just south of Da Vinci Street, south of our current fleet facility. And again, the beauty of that is that you can imagine, operating a satellite operation is just not very efficient. So now I've got mechanics at North Base, I've got mechanics at South Base. I'd like to have them in one place if we can, and that's the beauty of this proposal. So there, there won't be any expense in land acquisition or not? We own the property. It's a, if you can picture it up there, this is the site of the current fire training facility.
Yep.
I guess, and so they're, they're redoing some of that. We're going to use that space and, and construct a building on that location.
Counselor Petron?
How much additional funds are going to be needed?
We don't know. We don't, we haven't designed anything yet, so that's kind of what I'm looking to you for tonight. If you like this concept, we're ready to start tomorrow, pursuing architects and others to help us decide what we need and what it's going to cost. I have a feeling it's going to cost more than $875,000, but again, we'll, we'll stay within the budget. This is why that $3 million coming back from the federal government becomes very important here. We'd like to use as much of that to do this as we can.
Counselor Scanlon?
As I understand, the concept is more of a steel-sided building, quickly erected, minimal cost. I mean, it will be, it will cost, but, but we're not talking about some palace and-
Yes, sir. Actually, a metal building, concrete floors. But again, we needed to operate the, you know, to do the fleet maintenance, we need all of the systems that we can, that use. There will be some small office space and so on in that area, but Counselor Petron, I just don't know right now. We've not designed the building, and we're in the early stages of planning.
Your estimate?
You know, from my experience, to do what we are proposing to do, I think we're going to be up around 1.5 to 2 million dollars easily.
In additional or total?
Total. That's, that's my guess.
And I would add in, I fully support being a good stewards of taxpayer dollars and constructing this facility, but I also want it to be a good one that withstands Oklahoma weather and whatnot, so let's not go too cheap on it.
I appreciate that. I think what's, what we're going to see is because of the limited funds, we're going to design a basic facility with expansion opportunities in the future as funding becomes available.
Counselor Hickman?
One other quick question, I guess I should have asked you about before. You said that all of our operations will be out of OU facilities, so I assumed in my mind that meant not just the maintenance, but the dispatchers and all, whatever other stuff it takes to run a bus system. Where are those other people going to be? Are they going to be at the same site? Yeah, they're going to be at the CART facility on the interim, and then they'll hopefully convert over to our new building with us. So the dispatchers and the operational aspects of the bus system will be at this new maintenance facility in the North Base? Yes, sir. We hope. That's our, that's our goal. We've got to put them somewhere, and we'd like to get them out of the OU facility and stop paying a lease rate. That'd be our goal. And as, as we talked last week, let's be frank, you've got folks who were laid off by the university and now have been hired by M-MARK, and they're going to be operating under one roof. That's a recipe for really not friendly feelings probably, so we'd like to get them out of there and get them under our own roof. Okay, so I chaired this last week, and I'll drill down a little bit into some of the, the details here. We're, we're receiving a fleet of 27 vehicles from the university. This is that, to that question that Counselor Hickman asked. The, there are seven large buses, 18 small buses and vans, average mileage 200,000 miles. 22 of these vehicles have exceeded their useful life, so we're getting a really old beat-up fleet. The average age of the fleet is nine years. The cost of a new large bus, 40-foot buses, is $550,000. So we're, we're inheriting a very expensive fleet to replace, and we have no fleet replacement budget today for this.
Counselor Vermin?
So 18 plus 7 is 25. Where are the other two?
There, there are a couple of vehicles for staff and-
Oh, okay, okay. I was just like, are we getting two more large buses?
Like shuttles, like caravans and things like that.
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Pickup and-
Counselor Petron?
OU kept some vehicles as well, correct? Are they all aged out as well?
I don't know as much about the fleet that they kept. That was part of that whole FTA agreement when they, when they transferred over. I wouldn't doubt that they kept some of the newer stuff, frankly, but that's the way it, it was set up with the FTA agreement, the transfer of service. We are getting two brand-new buses, brand-new, haven't even been put into service yet, because if they kept, they, they got those through a grant program last year. If they kept them, they would have to pay full price now, and so they're giving them to us because we're only having to pay 20% of the grant. So we're starting with two brand-new buses.
Counselor Scanlon?
Thank God. Large buses cost a lot of money, and I understand the need for vans with the para-transport and so on. Do we have to buy seven new big buses?
I, I don't think so. It's a great question, and that's partly why we're anxious to get into this and figure out what we need. We're, we're not going to be bringing back to you fleet replacement for a little while until we know what we really need. Those are, you're right, that seems very expensive, and I think we've all seen some of the buses around Norman with two or three passengers. So perhaps we can find a more efficient way to operate this fleet, just don't know yet. So again, here's the numbers, and here's, kind of gets to your point of discussion tonight with the eighth cent, eighth percent sales tax discussion. So what we, we're estimating right now a $3.8 million per year operation. We're a little high. We're intentionally high on all of our numbers because we're estimating. We've never done this before. Obviously, we're using the experience of CART and of M-MARK, so these numbers are really pretty solid, and there's a lot of background to these that I won't bore you with tonight, but these are still estimates. But we won't know what this thing really costs until we finish a year of operation. The federal participation is just over $2 million. That's that grant that we talked about earlier. Right now, we're estimating the city's contribution in FY20 to be 1.45 million. Remember, you already budgeted 1.135 million. There's other revenue. Counselor Vermin asked this last week, and I didn't have it. So the other revenue sources that we're projecting or estimating about $350,000. So the, the deficit, if you will, if, if these numbers come to be, you are $314,500 short already in FY2020. Don't know that until we get there, but that could happen this year. So kind of looking at it a different way, annual operating costs, with the agreement that you're going to look at next Tuesday, we're going to, M-MARK is being asked to pay, be paid up to 2.9 million to operate that fixed route and that paratransit system. That's an, that's an up to number, meaning that they're estimating. If they find out they don't need 18 drivers, they only need 16, we're going to pay for 16. Okay? If they find out they don't need 18 drivers, they only need 16, we're going to pay for 16. So they're doing the best they can to estimate what they need to run this system, but it may change over the course of the year. The fleet maintenance cost to that question earlier, we're estimating $900,000 a year to maintain this fleet. That's not replacing it. That's maintaining it, paying for fuel, parts, replacing engines. We already have one that needs an engine replacement and so on. So that's what we think it's going to cost. Again, we're a little high there. And then startup costs, we're estimating with the help of Embark, 1.3 million. So going back to that $3 million we're hoping to get, we need to make some changes to the system to make it ours. Here's the budget, kind of how it breaks down. The city subsidy, we're estimating 1.45 million. $2 million in federal funds, $150,000 from the state, about $50,000 in fare box revenues. We're going to, we think about $100,000 in advertising revenues. Norman Regional Hospital will continue to pay $50,000 for a total operating cost of 3.8 million. But note the city subsidy there, the in parentheses, 38.2%. Again, if all this pans out like we're estimating, just to put it in perspective, Embark in Oklahoma City, the City of Oklahoma City subsidy to Embark is 60%. 60% is what their budget is allocating for, to run that bus system in Oklahoma City. So we feel pretty good about this right now, that we're coming in in the 30s. So startup costs, what does that mean? I've just learned this in recent weeks. These buses need new radios. They need new fare boxes. The current fare boxes don't work with the Embark system. We need to put Embark on them and not CART anymore. So lots of money we're going to spend to get these buses to be our system, much more than I thought we were going to spend. But that's what we're estimating. So over the course of 90 to 180 days, we're going to need to spend about 1.3 million just to get this fleet ready to operate as a City of Norman system. We're estimating, just for the sake of discussion, about $1 million a year in your fleet replacement program. You need to put about a million bucks a year into replacing these buses for the foreseeable future if we're going to keep this system running. Not to dwell on this tonight, but we talked briefly about this last week. There is a current fare structure that CART has operated for many years. They've talked to me about, they wish they had increased their fares sooner. They felt like they had, they needed to, but they never did it. So if you ride a fixed route trip today on CART, you're going to pay 75 cents. If you call for a para-transit trip, you're going to pay $1.50. The Embark rate structure that we are adopting, or you will have the opportunity to adopt when we contract with Embark, a fixed route trip on Embark is $1.75. A para-transit trip in Zone 1, I'll talk about what the zones mean here in a minute, is 3.50, not 1.50. Zone 2, $7.00. Zone 3, $10.00. So the zones, as the number increases, they go out farther from the base fixed route system.
How will we determine what those zones are?
I'll show you here in a minute.
Okay, because the Veteran Center, they clearly live on a fixed income. And I want to, and same thing with a lot of our residents with disabilities, and that's the most-used part of our bus system, so...
That's the choice of council going forward, of course.
Councilmember Wilson. Can we, of course, jump ahead, but, and could we average and offset that cost throughout the whole zone, 1, 2, and 3? Everybody pay it even amount, that it's a higher amount?
I think council can do whatever you want to do, but I would just caution you to say that, and I'm sort of speaking on behalf of Embark. Embark folks will be here next week for you, but they are really recommending and strongly suggesting that we adopt their fare structures, their policies, their civil rights, all the things that they've already adopted and FTA has approved. They recommend that we adopt those. And it makes a lot of sense to me, rather than starting over fresh and having our own, having a different fare box than theirs anyway. So if we're going to contract with Embark, they're recommending that we adopt their rates. That's something that council needs to wrestle with. We're going to recommend to you next week on that agreement that just to get us going here on August 2nd, we provide free rides for 30 days until you all can catch your breath and figure out what you want to do on this issue.
Councilmember Carter.
Is that so there's continuity between City of Norman?
That's exactly right. And so this notion of now regional transit, if you get on a bus in Norman, it'll be the same kind of bus in Oklahoma City.
Everything looks the same, everything costs the same.
Exactly. And that's the whole principle here, regional transportation as opposed to a different system in Norman, a different system in Oklahoma City. So that's something you're going to have to wrestle with.
Councilmember Bearman.
So I understand wanting to smooth out Norman to Oklahoma City, but we will still have two service operators in Norman. And so what is going to be the interplay between the CART system and Embark? Because I know we all think about the student routes as being only for students, but it's not just students who live on those campus area routes. So are students going to pay? And how is that going to work? How, if an individual, just a Norman resident, lives on a CART route, are they going to be paying twice?
Yeah, great question.
So that's, those are my worries.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I should have addressed some of that earlier. So the University of Oklahoma is still going to operate four routes. They call them campus routes. They're operating those for students only. That's really where they started, if you think about it. That's where it all started. And because they're going to continue to collect that student fee, my son is a freshman this fall and he'll be paying whatever that fee is, along with all the other fees I'm looking at right now. Anyway, so their students already pay a fee. They're going to provide this service to them, just like they did last year on those four campus routes. Now, what they've asked, what they've told us is that if those students want to ride on a city route or an Embark route, they, the university will pay the city for so many of routes. So we'll keep track of how many students are riding on our buses and the university will cut us a check. That's what the suggestion has been, at least at this point.
What about for the Norman residents who live on those campus routes, however?
They've told us, the university has told us that anyone will be allowed to ride on their buses, just like they do today. They have very few non-students, but they've indicated they're willing to just give everyone a ride. They don't want to collect fees.
Okay, because I've heard from some who do ride it and they were very concerned about what that was going to mean for them.
Something to work out, that's what they've told us.
So, did I hear, just, Councilmember Petron?
Sorry. So is the new fare boxes that we're going to be getting consistent with what you're talking about as keeping track of someone that came on the bus?
Exactly. So there's a fare box technology that Embark uses and there's a fare box technology that CART uses. They're different. And again, it's in our interest to have the same system, same technology, same data gathering that Embark has.
Right, but it anticipates that there's another bus service that we're going to have to...
Yeah. Well, I think what council's going to have to think about here is that, as we said earlier, you're going to be phasing into fixed routes August 2nd, para-transit October 1st, we hope. And so you may choose to just do no, zero fares, free rides for a couple, three, four months until we figure this out, which eliminates any confusion in the interim. On October 1st, if everything goes as planned, OU is out of the transit business and we are all in. And that's the goal here. We hope we can meet that. To that question about zones, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Wilson. I have one that relates to that last bit. Did I hear you say that the campus routes would not have a fee for residents?
That's correct. They're not collecting any fares.
Okay.
Just keeps it simple.
Yeah.
You know, about 50% of the ridership is on that Lloyd Noble bus, Lloyd Noble parking to campus. About 50% of the riders annually are on that thing. So they're just not collecting anything.
They run that on game day, is that a thing?
They do, for a fee.
There's a fee. I gotcha. Smart.
So I learned a lot. This is ADA coming in, back into our world here. This is where Jack is going to be very helpful. So when you talk about zones, we have two in Norman, Oklahoma City has three. And Zone 1, para-transit service is defined by the ADA as 3/4 of a mile with, from the fixed route system. So you can see this jagged line around Norman. That's the Zone 1. So everything within this line is in our Zone 1 and we have to, if we provide para-transit, we have to provide para-transit.
We get transit funds, we have to provide.
So if we take transit funds, we have to provide that. Now, everything outside of that is Zone 2. You don't have to do that. CART has been doing that. So CART has been providing para-transit, I guess, citywide. They have, they've not distinguished it, nor did they have different rate structures. And this is why the City of Oklahoma City charges $7 for Zone 2, because they might go 10 miles east or west. And that's something for council to think about. Do you want to provide a ride to Little Axe for a buck fifty?
I do.
Or do you want to make that three bucks?
Why, yes, yes, I do.
It's something we've got to figure out. I understand.
Sustainable, but I would love to do that.
But that's the point. Anyway, this is how the zones are defined, and it really is an accessibility issue. And so we have to provide Zone 1 service if we take those federal funds.
That looks like core Norman, but all the way in the Veteran Center and all that.
Yeah, it does. Gets out to 24th Street on the east, gets out to, I know, beyond 36th on the west, to comes on the north, almost Highway 9 on the south. Pretty, pretty large area. Anyway, that's Zone 1. That's what, that's our obligation. So here's the bottom line to your discussion tonight. The anticipated revenue, according to Mr. Francisco, from an 8% sales tax citywide is 2.5 million. Transit system costs that we have presented to you tonight, 2.45 million dollars a year, ironically, coming in right. So you're going to spend about 2.45 million a year, and I suspect that number's going to grow in future years to run this transit system, as long as you continue to run it as a city service. You can continue to draw that from your general fund and your capital fund, or you can maybe consider the 8% sales tax as a source of funding for this system. And again, that 2.45 million includes the 1 million per year in fleet replacement. So it does include buildings and all the rest of this stuff we need to build, but it does include the operation and the fleet replacement. I'll stop there. I have material on parking if you want to get into that tonight, but I'll stop there.
If you just want to flip ahead to the next slide, it mentions the Parking and Transit Authority and the Parking Strategic Plan. I'm going to throw out to all of you guys two things. One, I don't think we have the money to execute a Parking Strategic Plan with the multi-jurisdictional Parking Authority. And if we did, I don't know if we have time to put it together in a simple way that will get support. And I do like the idea of including some parking, because while we're talking about regional transit and looking to the future, we're going to have four RTA stops. And if we don't create a system that allows people to get to it, but then park their cars and use it, it's not going to be as effective as we want it to be. So I would love to structure it where it includes public transit and parking, but maybe not as far as this one. What do you guys, what's your feedback on that?
Thank you. Councilmember Bearman.
So I think it seems quite fortuitous that the cost to run a public transit system in Norman is approximately what we've received from a 1.8% sales tax. And then what I do think, I don't even know that we need to go as far as including parking in this, because what this is going to do is free up whatever that number was from six slides back.
About 1.1.
Yeah, it'll free up 1.1 from the general fund that we're already going to plan to spend on transit that we could then redirect into parking at a future time. I think that the beauty of this right now is that it is cut and dry, it is clean. We need 2.45 million to run a transit system in this city. This 1.8 sales tax brings in 2.5. I mean, to me, that is, it's easy, it's easy to understand. It's fairly simple, other than all the moving parts of parking, you know, fleet maintenance and all that. But this is, this is a package. This is an easy package that is, I don't think will be too difficult to market, and the need is, has been clearly demonstrated for the last few months as we've worked through this CART transition. So I think that parking could very much be addressed by the funds that are freed up if the public sees what we see here. But I think you're right. I think that we do need to be looking at this as a whole. I just think that from the 1.8 sales tax perspective, that that could be very clean, just transit.
My concern would be, while there is a clear need, not many people ride it right now. And is there enough interest to get this passed? That's my concern. So the parking does help us with those that don't use it and helps kind of expand its reach a little bit more. I will go ahead and direct you as well to about 2.5 million, so that we don't have a lot to play with. The email that we received today from Maureen Hammond, she had to step out. I hope you all had a chance to review it. If you haven't, I will summarize. They appreciate us even considering it, and I hope that we will continue to be open-minded as we look at job growth and other pieces of the Market Street Plan to execute that in Norman. For example, I have visited Intern OKC and learned about their program, and their budget is ridiculous for that. But we need something like that in Norman. I visited the new Top of the World facility and talked to their staff who don't live in Norman and who know nothing about Norman. And if we had some sort of plan for you move here and companies can pay for your staff to go on this quarterly training meeting for their first year here, we could build the roots in our community. So there's clear need for it, but I think they want to roll this plan out correctly. I think it's a good plan. They're going to reconvene the steering committee, and so we'll be deciding which other two councilmembers will be joining that so we can continue that conversation, because I, having been on that steering committee, do believe it is a good plan. But we're, they're not, we don't want to rush it. That's how much they believe in it, and I support that. So that's...
They're withdrawing their ask?
Yes.
Does it actually say that there?
I feel like it did. But that leaves, do we want to try to include something with that to build that voter base and increase the chance of it passing? Ms. Walker confirmed today that it would be two ballots, instead of just one, because they're two very different issues. Whatever we would decide to do. What could we use it for? Norman Forward Projects, they're all going, we don't have full budgets on that. And once they're built, we didn't budget for ongoing maintenance and operations. So kind of pointless to have all of these great facilities if we can't operate them. Public Safety Sales Tax, also underfunded. Like, we have a long list of things that we can choose from here. So I guess my question, and to get feedback, stormwater could be one. That one, I'm a little nervous about, because we haven't done so well with stormwater on ballots in very recent history, just to point that one out.
The needs haven't gone away.
And neither have the needs of the other issues I've mentioned. So I don't think it's necessarily a good thing that we get to pick which issue we would like to fund. Councilmember Hickman.
Sorry I missed y'alls discussion last week. I tried to follow along a little bit, a little bit.
You didn't. You weren't paying attention at all.
Whatever.
As you should.
Well, my tie, no. And I guess, and now even, even today, it seems even more like an idea that maybe we should consider is having a town hall, you know, community town hall meeting or meetings, and put it out to the people of, you know, here are some, you know, here's this opportunity, here are some needs, you know, whether it's, you know, simplifying it down, here's a public transit, you know, system need, here's stormwater needs. I mean, whether we could say, we could use this $2 billion to cover the federal mandated costs of the stormwater fee. We could use this $2 billion to do revenue bonds, to take, to start tackling some of the stormwater infrastructure projects. We could take some of that money to do economic development type stuff, whether it's RTA-related. I mean, I would love the city to be an institution to start buying the land around where those stations are going to be for the rail system. I think buying that land now is going to be cheaper than, you know, buying it in the future. And, you know, transit-oriented development is, I think, going to be a growing, it's a growing concept in the, you know, out there as it is. But we don't have the money to do all those things, but...
That's my concern with doing a public forum, is that we're doing like a maps call for, give me your ideas. We've got like this much money to work with compared to their 1% sales tax.
No, I understand, but that is a nice analogy maybe, but at least then we're getting some input from the public, maybe beginning to build some more public awareness and knowledge and maybe buy in. And I think doing polling would be a good idea as well. It was going to be my other suggestion is, you know, polling, you know, and give people, I mean, we can make the decision, but if we decide and don't hear from the people and it doesn't pass, then it doesn't really matter, versus trying to get some input, whether through polling and/or town hall meetings. I don't think we have time to, everybody do a board meeting. So I think it would be, need to be, you know, something that you could host and have a couple of them around the community and...
I do plan to, once we come up with a plan, I plan to have monthly mayoral forums. I am committed to fully funding public transportation, because if we don't, it will break us. So I don't want to open the door that far and get away from the obvious millions of dollars we need to provide every year. And so we're, my concern is when we do, again, give me your ideas, we have this much money to actually work with, and I don't think, I think we're going to let people down all the way around.
Yeah, I understand. Just an idea. Can I ask one question of Sean?
Okay.
Of that 2.5 million or so of the budget, it sounds like, my perception is that most of that's like on a contract. It's not a lot of staff, it's not a lot of employee... of that's like on a contract, it's not a lot of staff, it's not a lot of employee salaries.
That's correct. So yes, you would have additional staff in the fleet operation.
But it'd be a smaller percentage of that too. And I want to raise this, I think that's important. I think one of the lessons learned for me, and hopefully for all of us, is on the PSST, doing a program that has heavy employee salaries, funding it with sales tax, I don't think is very smart, because we've already seen that employee costs are outpacing sales tax growth. So I think we need to be very cautious about, you know, anything that we put forward, which is why, like, stormwater capital projects is something that I personally really like. I don't mind the fee aspect of it, but it makes me a little bit nervous, because that's a higher percentage of employee costs, and that could begin to outpace. But I just want, I think it's important that whatever I do, as we do banter around, we need to be cognizant that my suggestion would be something that's not heavy in employee costs, because we could find ourselves even in a worse position down the road.
Councilor Bearman?
So I, obviously, I don't mind the idea of having town halls or public feedback on it, but I think, to me, this is, if I were dictator for a day, I would do a couple things, but this would be one of them. I would do this, this plan, because it also builds in 500,000 to do things like restore Saturday service. And even if, even if none of us ride the bus, we know people who do. We know people who rely on the paratransit service, we know people who rely on the fixed route service. We know teenagers who maybe can't afford a car yet, or, you know, are trying to show their parents that they're responsible enough before they can get one, who ride it. I have a number of constituents who use the bus to get to school. So I still believe that parking is important, and I do think that this would free up money in the budget to use for parking and for RTA planning. But I think, I think the community gets this. The amount of feedback that I've gotten about CART from people who use it, people who don't, people who are employed by it, they recognize how necessary this is for our community, and instead of muddying the waters by trying to add other things, I think this is it. I think this builds in room for growth or changing our fixed routes in ways that we want, maybe extending service later in the evenings, which is a concern that I have heard, providing more stops, restoring Saturday service. I think that this gives us the wiggle room, instead of trying to carve away from that to try and build buy-in, I think we build buy-in for this, because I think the community knows that we need it. We're a city large enough that we can't do without it. We have a very significant percentage of the population without vehicles or who live in areas where they need this kind of transportation or rely on the paratransit. So to me, this is the good plan. This is the plan that we can build buy-in on, because this has been an ongoing issue for months. People have been talking about it. RTA, we kind of, kind of came through and had this big unveiling of the authority, and then nothing's going to happen for several years. So yes, we can put the money that we're freeing up in the budget aside to start doing that kind of work, but particularly when it comes to public vote initiatives, people like being able to touch and feel what they're getting for the money, I think, as we found out from recent votes. And so this is, I think this is the best, the best plan that we could put forward. It's simple, it's to the point, there's not any extra fluff in here for any other kind of thing. This is, this is what we need to run this system, and I think that that is the best ask that we can make of the public.
Councilor Carter?
Okay, I want to get clear of what you're asking. So you're saying, are we talking about what to do with the other $50,000?
That's what I was like, unfortunately. So.
Paperclips.
We get paperclips. I think, I think, let me rephrase that. A better question would be, how can we build the biggest base to get this passed?
Yeah. But so, but it would take a ballot that would have two questions on it, and they could vote for one and against the other, correct?
That's my understanding. Catherine?
Yes, you can't log roll, which means you have to meet a single subject test for your.
For each question. So personally, I think I like the idea of just keeping it simple and just going with one. I think we have built a community-wide level of awareness of the issue, I think, with the regional transit discussions that we've had. And then there was, I think, quite a bit of public discussion about when CART, you know, going back 11 months, that bombshell pretty much rocked the city, I thought. And so I think there's a perceived need, and I think, I think people will vote for it.
Councilor Hickman?
I'm always trying to think of like, you know, ways of trying to, you know, split the baby or moderate, be a moderator, if you will, mediator, I mean. Sitting here, hearing this conversation, a thought came to my mind that one, something to maybe get a broader base of support, go to what I think you originally had discussed last week, I wasn't here. There is going to be, and question that may come up is, you know, we may be freeing up about a million dollars in the budget. That's part of that 2, 2-plus million right now. We could consider, at the time that we put this forward to the ballot initiative, passing a resolution expressing our intent, while we can't bind future councils, but, you know, kind of an intent that we're going to begin to create a, I'll just say, $500,000 Economic Development Fund, you know, with some of that million-dollar money that's been freed up out of the budget if this passes. Conceptually, the business community is aware that this is an opportunity, it's much of a commitment that we could make, it's not a separate ballot measure, but it would create a City of Norman Fund, that we could use some of the money that would be freed up in the budget to go into that fund. And how we use that money, you know, obviously, we'll have to work all that out down the road when we have more time. But it could, it could be for a Norman Development Authority. I mean, I know I've talked to people about, you know, having, we have a Norman Development Authority that, you know, can, that's a creature of the law, that can do things, like, for example, buy the pad sides, buy the, buy the land around the regional transit authorities. I know y'all talked about NEDC last time, but now that they've kind of, I interpret this as they did withdraw their request, they're not ready. So I don't think, it would be, hey, we're giving you guys the money, because, you know, this is still in flux, but the city could begin to budget, you know, and we could have the monies, and it could be doing, it could be like what we did for Top of the World Hat, where we put $500,000 towards road improvements. It would be a fund that, you know, could be for those kinds of things, but, you know, initially at least, under the control of Council or something like a Norman Development Authority, that, you know, you know, could, could do thing, you know, and could be, we could even set it up where, you know, you could apply, you know, for the funds, if you're, you know, the intern, you know, community or something. There are lots of, to me, there are different ways we could talk about how that money is spent and managed, but it would be a way to incentivize other communities, other groups in our community, to support a vote that's all only on public transportation by it freeing up money in the general fund right now, that some people are maybe going to ask, what are you going to do with that extra million dollars that frees up? I mean, Councilman Burke Castleberry used to always bring that question up when we talked about the stormwater fee. You know, if you're relieving the general fund, what are you going to do with, you know, what's going to happen to that money? So just throwing it out there as an idea, don't, don't shoot the messenger or anybody. You know, whether it's good or bad, just, you know, trying to maybe throw some things out for people to chew on.
I fully support increasing our commitment to things like the, again, executing the Market Street Plan, once that's done. My only concern with the Development Authority, because I love your idea about buying the land by the RTA stops, I think that's fantastic, but that, I feel like that steps on the toes of the NEDC, because why, isn't that what we have them?
My, I don't know, my understanding is NEDC is not necessarily a legal, separate legal entity. I mean, it might be a separate legal entity in that it's formed as a nonprofit or something, but I don't think it has the powers that a Norman Development Authority would have under the Urban Development Act to actually condemn land. I mean, NEDC is more like a nonprofit board, I think. 501(c)(3). And so the Norman Development Authority, which I understand that this community created years ago, it's just sat on the shelf, it's never done anything, Brenda's not in her head, it has a lot of statutory powers of things it can do that NEDC certainly cannot do. I mean, for example, it can buy land, hold it almost as an investment, and then sell it in five years. You know, it can buy 20 acres around the development sites for transit in the future, transit sites, hold that land and then sell it as it becomes valuable for two developers. I mean, it can all, it can actually create income through an investment if it's run properly. There are a lot of communities, Midwest City, Oklahoma City, Dell City, Tulsa, that have development authorities that, with some seed money, can almost begin to operate just on the cash that they create by their investments, you know, primarily in real estate. Now, I'm not saying that's the only way to go, I'm just throwing it out there, has something that the community's never done, but a lot of other cities do use it very effectively for economic development, and it gives a tool, it creates an entity that can do things that I think some of us would look at, that if we'd had in the past, like, for example, in Center City, could, could have done really cool things if we would have been able to buy up some land in Center City, or buy up land, like a North Flood, where there's discussion about doing developments up there, or the 2040 Plan that talks about a mixed use project over there, like in Griffin, you know, buy the Griffin Parkland, just, you know, but I don't mean to ramble, but that's, that may not be the only place that money would go, it may not be where the money would end up going at all, but I think, I think there are options there that, that for economic development, there would be some opportunities that are not economic development in the way some people might be thinking of like, oh, and send those to businesses and that kind of thing, but rather, it can do things, economic development could be things that could improve the quality of life in the community, but could also create opportunities for developments that would otherwise never happen. I mean, I've got a deal right now in Midwest City that I'm dealing with, where they had to go buy up three parcels of land in order to attract, you know, a quality job, you know, project to come into the community, but, you know, the city couldn't buy the land themselves, but their Development Authority could.
Well, I support this idea, but let's not get ahead of ourselves. So it sounds like that we're leaning towards going just public transit.
Just public transit.
We don't have two of our council members here, but I would like your feedback on instructing staff to do polling on that, that one issue. And then we're not meeting again next week, we're having a presentation from the county on the Healthy Living Block, so we won't discuss this again until the following week. And then hopefully, we can have the results by then. If not, we should definitely have it by the retreat on Friday, the 26th, where we can dive into that, and that'll give us about a month to keep, keep on moving down that trail. Councilor Hickman?
All right. And lastly, I just wanted to say was, can we, you know, two, two points, could we, looking at the list of people who contribute, I saw the hospital gives 50,000, I mean, could we speak to the county about them becoming a partner and contributing some money to this budget? Because, you know, they're right in the middle of where a lot of these bus routes are, and they've got people they got to get to the, to the courthouse.
And the Healthy Living Block.
And the Healthy Living Block, exactly.
I've heard they're going to be getting some extra money too.
And so that and/or, you know, the other possibility or idea would be to, you know, I mean, not that we have much of this tax left over, but if we don't end up doing it at the, at the city level, we could, like I think I put in my email, have this run at the county level, whether it's for public transit or something else, and we get our share of the county's portion, and that might actually leave some extra money available, because not everybody in the county is going to pull down those dollars.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
I just want to add that I agree that it should just be the bus. I mean, that's what, we're talking about public trust especially. We're saying, you know, we were gifted, as you say, from OU, this lovely.
These are positive ways to look at this opportunity.
Opportunity.
We can come with clean hands and say, we need the money to continue our gift.
Okay.
We need to fund it. So rather than muddying the water with all of these extra things.
Staff, do you have what you need from us for tonight?
Thank you, appreciate it. Alan Leese is already kind of ready to do the polling, pick it up whenever you want.